True environment such as Parallels Desktop on Mac with an Intel-based processor. Windows as a guest operating system. So there you go.
Everybody on board there that needs to be?
I did not.
She said she might sign on, she might not, and I think Jennifer will be here, but you can start.
Four people, you have sound, you have...
I hope so. We're the only ones, so I guess I really...
Okay.
You're right, yeah. First time for everyone.
Well then, it is six o'clock, so I'd like to call it a order. The regular hybrid meeting of Woodstock Planning Board for December 21st, 2023. Do we have any updates to these? All right, we have the minutes for December 7th, if everybody's okay with them, I'd like to approve them as is. Is everybody okay with this?
Yes.
Under Communications and Announcements, we have the response from the WEC for their recommendations for additional CBA protections that we asked them for to give us some guidance when we do work in the CBA. We have an email from the Town of Hunter Planning Board regarding a net debt declaration that we was... It was. And we have a notification of a public hearing for the town of Sardus, which is a subdivision next to our town line. Didn't think it touched our town line, but it's close.
I think because of the Con Conservancy.
Oh.
What triggered it?
I looked up on that.
I meant to take a look at that.
So it's right next to them. It's right next to them. They were supposed to be notified, we aren't always, so...
I didn't see anything.
He said it was a Woodstock Land Conservancy next to them, they must have thought...
Contiguous, yeah, yeah.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yep.
So they're not actually touching us?
No.
Sorry. I didn't look at that.
Since I don't keep the whole county on my map, whatever team matter, I can't find it without...
Good town road.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, James, and I know good town road well.
Yeah, it's a subdivision.
Where are you with learning this thing? Interesting doors now.
Um, yes, I'm interested.
Oh, hi, Jeannie. Can you hear us? Good.
That was... I'll have to show you how I do whether I need...
Okay.
Jeannie's joining us, yes, ma'am.
Oh, Jeannie's on.
Yep, I just said hi, Jeannie. She hears us, we're holding. That's it, you're hungry, I mean, she doesn't...
We don't hear her.
We can't hear you because you're muted.
I'm unmuted now, so you can hear me now, right?
So nice to see your face, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The question is...
Good to see you all.
Please unmute yourself or please mute yourself.
It all depends.
All right, under new business, schedule business, we have a public hearing, or do you mean with the sketch plan? The public hearing, come on up. It's, uh... Alphane Reliable Trust, Plan War Case 23-1126A. It's a public hearing for a subdivision application to subdivide a lot of 30 acres into three lots of 5.8, 11, and 13 acres in the R3 and R5 zoning districts located on the Xena Road in Woodstock. And Barry Price is the representative. So, uh, since he's already told us what we're doing, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Some moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, so like I said, Barry's already told us what he's doing, is there anybody here? There is?
I only had one call, and they asked for it after the link, and they... They're hunters. They're taking...
Well then, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so Barry, if you want to quick tell the board what you're doing, I know we've already got it.
Yeah, we have a subdivision, yeah, it's a, it's a 30-acre lot with, um, that we're subdividing into, into three, uh, three lots with due respect to the existing wetlands that are there, there's an existing...
Yeah, I'm looking at the map, it's very interesting wetlands.
Yeah.
They did a beautiful job.
And some steep little bridges.
It's a beautiful site, I mean, it's, it's...
What is this one, Xena?
It's, um...
James and Jennifer.
It's sort of across from, what's that road that I turned around and I passed?
Four-Rill Drive.
Oh, from what?
Yeah.
From what?
Four-Rill Drive, right?
No, 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 that's...
That's the name, the little bit of road. It's the, the...
That would be a...
Former Sedbury now Democratic School, if you know where that is, it's a little bit...
Oh, yeah.
Further along from there on the right side.
I'm sitting there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been up and talked about it, it's not that far.
Yeah. And they have three contiguous 30-acre lots running from, uh, west to east on the, and two they're gonna leave on the Sturbs.
Three 30 acres?
Yeah.
That's a lot of land.
Yeah, it's a lot of land.
And they literally are proposing building envelopes to preserve a lot, like, it was, nice job subdivision, nice job.
Yeah, well, it matters. So, they're not equal, uh, they're one of the lots is 11 acres, one is just shy of 6, and one is, uh, 13, so they're unbalanced, but it was one of them, some of them are accommodating some of the wetland, and we're gonna stay away from it.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I could, I can put the, I can put the thing up.
Oh, sorry.
Just a second, I'll, I'll put it up, so...
So...
Okay, it's now going up on the...
That's the buffer.
There we are.
Nice, okay. This wasn't existing, um...
They're back.
That's Rock Road.
Yeah.
So how are we dealing with crossing the screen?
It's already a forward in there. We're just gonna, we're just gonna sort of leave it and, and just reinforce it, so, you know, it's in good shape, it's not in kind of danger of...
I gotta find the, I gotta find the plant in here.
Right, I think I already have one.
For curb cut, yeah, so there's a right-of-way coming through from Xena Road over here. Um, again, uh, this is an older drawing.
It looks like I never had the buffer on it, darn it.
Uh, sorry. But you can see the same wetland, and then here's the, here's the buffer. So we're staying away from, from the wetland, obviously, we've got three building sites. Uh, pretty short driveways and obviously using as much of the existing road as we can.
Oh, you found the plant?
Yes.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Right?
I am looking at the right place, yes?
Uh...
I have to tell you, I think you need to go on your career, because when we were...
Okay.
Me and my colleagues...
So my question is, where, how are the lots set up? Because I don't have the thing. Can you push your head over so I can see a little bit?
The right turn of the road is here, all right.
You need to see it.
That's why I learned this.
Mine is more tells and drawings.
And this looks like it's east-west. And you must understand what it's trying to communicate, it's not...
It's like this on your screen.
There are some boxes, so...
But anyway, you come through and, and the first lot...
Okay, yeah, I think this is a lot here, seven miles.
A lot here.
Man, that road is right through the middle of the whole one.
Best of luck to us.
Well, this road, when it is, um, the corner of it, when anywhere there is a...
I believe it's already there.
Yeah, well, you see it?
If the road is already there, I suppose there's nothing we can do about it.
The road was already there pre-purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah, they already have a curb cut in place and everything, and the culvert's there, it was done...
Well, I'm not so much worried about the flagpole, as when you get into the main part of the lot, there's all that wetland and buffer and...
We're not doing any work from any of the, any of the buffers.
Their plans clearly state they're away from all of it.
Okay, and what about this nat- national wetlands stream that goes all kind of north, southward?
We're near...
They had delineated.
Yeah, everything was...
Might know when we came in.
Okay, I mean, if you've got a delineate...
I know you're looking at that, but if you looked at this plan, um...
Well, I got it, but I don't know where the heck it is.
Is it updated on?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Xena Road's over here, right?
And this is what I'm talking about, and it's already got a culvert.
So you see, this is the wetland.
Mm-hmm.
This is the buffer, red, we're over here.
So you're in the buffer over here.
Yeah, but we're not building there, we're outside of the buffer everywhere, we're building, we're building on the, on the...
And the metal right exists.
This exists, all the way to here, and we're giving the little spurs, one of them we're barely making the driveway, using, so we're trying to use...
If this were a new road, you'd be in trouble, what's an existing road, so I guess...
Exactly.
Are there numbers in the board, questions, or the ring?
So, I'm doing, so everything is part of a lot, but the lots are different sizes, is that the basic?
They were, they were, they were different sizes based on apportioning the buildable area with respect to the wetland.
But the wetlands are also part of somebody's lot.
Yes.
Distributed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it works out that the largest, the 13-acre lot has mo- is, is almost two-thirds wetland.
Right, okay. That's how we would probably ask you to do it if we were able to ask for a conservation subdivision, which we can at this point.
Right, yeah.
So it's good.
Yeah, um, yeah, we, we share the same goal, you know, uh, it'd be great if I didn't have to build any houses on that piece of land, but I've been asked to, so I have to do it in a way that's as gentle as possible.
Good.
Single-family residential. Music to my ears.
Any questions? Very, anyway. So, uh, make a motion, we're going to vote, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application pending draft review. Approved. Favor. Favor, we're now, Barry.
Okay. I'm gonna, I can get my other drawings.
Are you, are you sure you don't, you couldn't bring them both at the same time?
No, I feel, I feel for the, for this one, the meeting, I should walk away and come back.
This is all being recorded.
I'm not embarrassed.
I think you should change your sweater to a new outfit.
Yeah. I won't do that.
In this case, the board has a sketch plan to approve.
Yeah.
I saw it on the table, didn't I?
Yeah, I noticed.
Yeah.
This is Philip and Maxine Armstrong, SCP-23-0689. This is a sketch planning view of a specially used permit application for new construction of a single-family residence located in the R5 and scenic overlay zoning business on Jessup Road. And Barry Price is a vet, so Barry, if you'd like to kill the word.
Yeah, so this is a, a new single-family residence in scenic overlay, it's on Jessup Road. Uh, you know Jessup Road, everybody?
Not firsthand.
Amy turns into Jessup as it crosses Silver Hollow. Okay.
By the old animal sanctuary.
Exactly, and it dead ends back in there, and so on the northern side of it, it starts to get some elevation, you get some mountain views, south facing.
Yeah, you certainly have some interesting road to design there.
Well, this is, this is another one where the property was purchased with not a developed, but a driveway. And I, I took, I'm waiting on a topo survey of the driveway, but I, I built a driveway profile just from the topo I could get from the, uh...
Well, I can, I can show you the slopes.
Well, I have them.
Yeah.
I have them.
I've got some 25-degree...
Well, I... No, no, I have it all charted, and there's, there's only one section of it that's pushing the code, and the, the plan is just to, to adjust the slope to distribute some of that, so it's all passable. What we don't want to do is put in a new driveway, because then we're gonna be in the same problem with drainage and disturbance, and, you know, I've got a hit...
So again, there's already a driveway there.
There is.
Yeah.
How long does the driveway to the house?
Uh, it needs a turnout, so it's over 700. Yeah, it's, it's pushing 2,000, it needs to...
It's pretty flat, except for that one...
I'm gonna need a drive there that I see. This is a cross-section of the driveway, and there's one bump near the top.
Yeah, it's...
But, but I think that, that we can distribute that by, by doing some fill below it and cutting it back, because once you get near the top, it flattens out, and I can get my turning radius for a fire truck and all that stuff.
And then you've got quite a lot of, of, of pretty flat land up there.
The, the building, the, the building site is really, there's no such thing as flat, but it's not super aggressive topographically.
Yeah.
And we don't have to take out a whole bunch of trees to do it.
Yeah, when I turn on my contour lines, I can see how crazy it is.
So that means, Barry, you've, you've got a pull over somewhere along the way, right? Pull off.
I do. Yes.
It's in the plan.
Yeah, I have a turnout on, on it.
Okay, that one, I actually have the map, but it, it was a little bit hard to read it in comparison to what I have here, so I'm not sure exactly where, it's kind of in the middle of it.
You want me to show you?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there's a nice, pretty flat area here, I don't know if that's why the house is going. Where's your driveway?
Let me get my plant, so I'm looking at it.
Let me make sure I've got the right one, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, definitely in the right place, there's that, that, huh, and so right...
There's a high point, literally just behind the house, I don't want to put the house on there.
Okay, so you're kind of putting it in here.
Tucking it against the highest point.
Kind of.
I never like the house to be the highest thing I'm on.
And you're not allowed to?
Yeah, so then we're aligned.
Yep, that's good, okay.
So Barry, the road goes over 10% for, for some distance, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I think we can go 300.
I'm verifying it with a surveyor, because I, I did, I kind of extrapolated from the topo on the, on the parcel viewer. Um, so yeah, there's, there's a, there's a little bit of it that would, that's not compliant if you break it up into segments, so that I know I can, I know I can hit the average well.
Go 300 feet over 10%.
That's nothing like that.
Oh, okay.
The red is over 25. The red in my map is over 25, now let me look. The yellow is 15 to 20, I mean...
If you were to drive it just experientially, you would say, oh yeah, there's one section here that we need to reduce, because it's, I don't, I'm not comfortable driving, you could...
So what do you do, you cut down some of that and you fill below it?
Mm-hmm. That so far is the best plan, because trying to reduce the slope dramatically means, um, you know, S-curves and switchbacks and...
And you'd be going...
From a law standpoint, it's problematic, from a disturbance standpoint, it's problematic, you can see relative to the, 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 the driveway comes in and through a little leg, you know, to Jessup, so there's, you're halfway up, well, you're a third up the driveway before you can do this.
Yeah, and you've got an elevation of about 60 feet, I don't know what, how far the distance is before you get to this really steep stuff.
Uh, it's, it's a little over half the length of the driveway before you hit, the steep stuff happens right before the driveway curves to, to head up to the building site.
Right.
And there's actually a little bit of room there to pad it if we wanted to swing it a little bit to, to eat up some of the...
So this is, this is just kind of a curiosity question, you don't have to get into bedrock, you, you just have to fill all it so that it...
Like, in, in, in this case, because the, the approach is pretty shallow,
Mm-hmm.
and because there's drainage on, on, on both sides, we can build up the roadbed a little bit and average out the pitch.
Mm-hmm.
That would be the best way to do it, yeah.
And Barry, the house is a two-story house?
Yeah, yeah, two-story, again, you know, we're not cutting more trees than we need to, we'll have to cut for the septic. Um, I put the, I put the edge of the, you know, on the Sturbs, uh, woods on there. It's mostly deciduous. There's some, there's some nice, nice trees that we're gonna, you know, work around, so we don't have to obviously take, take some good shade trees out. Um...
So the three main questions are?
Yeah.
Your lights all have to be dark sky compliant?
Yeah, and I have an electrical site, electrical plan, and the fixtures expect, and they're all shielded dark sky.
And your windows are under 25% of the...
My windows are mitigated, they're a little over 25 on the south, but I have extensive overhangs, and there's a, there's a drawing that, that shows that on all the couches around there.
And your roof, the roof is...
Do you have the plan up?
Yeah, the roof is not glossy.
Did I look at it before, it's just a little bit harder. Is there a drawing of the house?
And that's the side income.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't go there.
What were you gonna say, you're writing mitigation?
I was gonna say that by having extensive overhangs for shading, I'm mitigating the potential for reflection.
Thank you.
Perfect.
How far does the overhang have to go for that to work?
Depends on how high the windows are off the ground.
Sure.
So, there's a lot of answers to that question, in this climate, just for solar shading, at least three feet is about what you want at a window that's at about 80 to 84 inches above the ground, that generally will get you the coverage you need in the summer, give or take, you know? So then, when you talk about mitigation, you know, there's a lot of factors, you start making longer overhangs, you gotta deal with wind uplifts, you gotta deal with expense, you gotta deal with engineering, so three feet is kind of a sweet spot. Um, sometimes we'll go a little more if we need the mitigation.
Oh, I was curious, because I've got, I've got three and a half, but...
Three and a half feet?
Yeah.
It's pretty good, unless your walls are really tall.
No.
Then you're good.
It's one of those little houses that came in on the...
Those houses here are like 18 inches, if you're lucky, maybe 24.
I don't know why these are so deep, but they are. Um, can you put the septic in a place that will give them a better view? Or that didn't just, doesn't work?
No.
Too bad.
No, but it kind of worked out, no, their, their view is, I don't mind a view with a couple trees in the way, you know, it doesn't need to be. And they're deciduous, so the view will open up, no, their view is fine, and actually where the septic's going is gonna open up some western sun, so that it sort of worked out.
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there are some people that want a view all year, but most...
They're gonna have a view all year, it's just gonna change, and that's, I think that's better, more interesting, yeah.
So we need some site reps up there.
Gotta walk up that driveway.
Look.
No, I can't walk up that driveway.
Yeah, I'll go.
I'll go.
Great, and I got you.
You can't do it in a four-wheel, right?
Anybody else?
Maybe.
Well, I wouldn't mind doing it, but I, I can't walk it.
Cool.
Is it staked out where the building will be, or could it be for the site reps?
I have, I have a couple strings that...
Show where the house is going.
Yes.
Do you want to go with them or Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. So we gotta coordinate with Barry, so if the two of you can just email me some good times.
So you guys are gonna walk up the driveway, huh?
Well, I've done it lots of times.
He's really good about being flexible for timing.
Okay.
So he's good to work.
You guys agree on a time or two different times that work, and I know one of them will work.
Okay.
Awesome.
Um... You don't have to tell me now, but if you want to.
Are we thinking, uh, like, after the New Year, or are we thinking? I'm not sure yet if I'm gonna be around next week, if I'm around next week, I don't mind doing it, but I'm just not.
Right, you never do that.
Really not a lot of rush, you're not gonna build until the summer, are you?
Jeannie, I'm here. Are you talking?
Okay. Just to let you know, um, I just said something in a chat, um, just let me, send me some times and I'll see if I'm also flexible.
All right, perfect, sorry, I'm not always looking at the screen.
That's okay.
Awesome, thank you.
I'd like to do it the week after the holidays.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
How about your plan for the week after the holidays?
Sure.
Because I don't know how to make the office deploy, I mean, I'm gonna take at least a day, so...
Yeah, once you guys get in touch off during that.
Oh, all right, I wish I could come. I'd have to have a four-wheel drive.
Um, I was also thinking, what you guys might want to do is come in and, or, or we can just look at the plans and talk together, because he has really accepted plans of everything, so it'll be, it's, this is a good, this is how it all comes together and what the things we ask for. For Barry's been around the lot, so he comes with everything prepared.
You have them up there, the drawings?
Um, true, true.
We can put it up, we can put it up, right? I actually have it.
If you want me to walk you through the plans for...
Just a second, I'll, I'll...
I mean, I hear you, right? I understand.
You can do it with him, but it's a real, like, he, he comes very prepared and has, like, everything that we ask for, he actually has, this is a good one.
Send it a couple times, so...
Yeah.
Okay, which document do you want?
No, I send them all the plants too before they go, so...
The plan, you want the plan?
No, I'm good, nobody else does, so I know what to do.
I do too.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I absolutely did look at it, but I didn't go down, I didn't go down the...
Yeah, they're all in, they're in.
Yeah, they're all there.
Okay, so I'll wait to hear about it, um, a date.
Yes.
And then we'll, we'll walk.
I apologize for having not looked at it with that in mind, but it was helpful that you showed it to me.
Yeah, sure.
What's the red on your site plan, is that this?
That's the...
I think that's the one, that's the spot that's...
Yeah, it's interesting how my things don't agree with your things, because mine really shows it in here, and some there. There is some there, but, but this is pretty good?
Yeah, yeah, that's been my experience, yeah.
No.
You know, that's, that's what I show.
Mm-hmm.
But, no, but this isn't bad, actually, yeah, this isn't that bad, it's, it's really over here.
It tightens up, right?
Yeah, because I've got two different shape files here, and one of them is this raster.
What are you looking at, you're not on that?
No, I have my own map.
Oh, you have your own map.
And I have Natural Resources inventory, yeah, I only look at it on the, on the topo, on the... Well, what I always say to people is, it has to be, it has to be determined on the ground, we just know in a general way.
This is why I'm surveying, I, I have a central line survey that I helped to have two months ago, that I'm still waiting for.
Okay.
But that's another story.
But anytime you'd like to see what our GIS can do, I'll be happy to give you a little tour.
Okay.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
And I'm in the new software, I jumped off the edge of the pool about three weeks ago.
Oh. For you.
So, uh, when the site reps do make a visit, remember that, gotta, gotta tour around the area to see if you think you can see it from anywhere else.
Across the town.
Somehow you gotta...
Kind of ride down the road, look up, you know, you go to different...
I think it's pretty good.
Are you thinking about a loop test, Peter?
No.
Or, or...
It's a little...
No. We don't even think we need to just draw them.
It's not weighing, it's way up.
Because of the way that it's sited, too.
Yes.
You're pretty far back from the edge of that drop-off.
That's why we're coming here.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
There will come a time when I can do view shed on this thing, but I'm not there yet.
Probably.
All right, Barry, so after the site visit...
It will still have to be determined on the ground, of course.
After the site visit, we'll set you up for a public hearing.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do our own, see.
Say hi to April.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
All right, thanks, everybody.
So, on finish business, we have to make a motion to approve the draft resolutions for Hall and planning board case 23-11. If Judy wants to.
And, some of those, another one.
And the wallet.
And for Roger.
Molly?
WWP.
That's a site visit update, that's not a resolution.
Yeah, yeah, no, it isn't. You know, you can't see. There's two resolutions, there's a red lens and one, of course, current.
Yeah.
What I added, 400 WWP number 23-054, who seconds it?
Who seconded it?
Everyone, all right, thank you. Now we're moving on to Malala's site visit.
Okay, so we're looking for a site visit update from Molly, which was James and Jeannie. They're both here.
Jeannie's up there, James is here.
On a shift.
Up on the wall.
Yes, we made it, um, about 10 minutes for total darkness, so, which you should keep in mind, by the way, when you're...
Yes, we did.
At 4:30, I was like, whoa.
Yeah, exactly.
I was like, I was kind of flooring it off the mountain, because I was like, oh my God, I gotta get the...
It's all right.
It's all right, it's getting longer every day now, so...
Starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow.
It was all just, yes, that, it was all staked out, it was all there.
And that concern of, of, I knew about, he had wrote me, the excavator, they actually do a fat shed, isn't it?
They just gotta fix that culvert at the beginning of the...
No, this is a new house.
It's a new house, if they're doing, right at the start of the driveway.
They moved on to Malala.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, right at the start of the driveway, there's sort of an overflow.
Yeah.
Um, the excavator, so they have to do a little recolor, but they already had a hot curb cut and everything from Heather Highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's...
That's right, look fine, yeah.
Beautiful retirement home.
Yeah, no, it's a pretty spot, um, there's really, I couldn't see any... I, I don't know what mountain it's facing, what is that mountain it's facing? It's, there's a big, beautiful mountain that faces...
Unfortunately, I don't have the mountain tagged on this map.
Yeah, they have...
I'm gonna get my bearings, because of the sun.
I'm gonna have to do that with somebody else, but I...
They have a beautiful winter view.
You can, we're on Hickory Lane.
Yes.
Off of, right, where it splits the four-wheel driveway and Hickory Lane on the other side, at the top of, um...
Rock Hill.
Rock Hill, yeah.
Yeah.
So what were you looking at?
You're figuring Wittenberg, man.
You're figuring...
Wittenberg, man, okay, so that was my only question was, you know, there really wasn't, because we're in scenic overlay, so there really wasn't any...
This site is at, not even the whole parcel is within the scenic overlay. This was a judgment call on one.
Oh, okay.
And he is doing his job.
Well, uh, uh, I'll give you a little information, about 200 feet down the road is 1200 feet.
It is, really weird, but...
It's well into the 1200 foot.
It's when I'm, I'm looking.
We use, uh...
I mean, my...
Yes.
So it had this very, they were like at Wittenberg, man, but I couldn't see any houses or any, or any lights or anything coming from what it was overlooking, what it was looking straight onto, so doesn't seem like that's...
So he's another one who's done this before and came with plans, he has everything, dark side compliant, blazing calculations, and he came very prepared coming for the public hearing planning board.
I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
And I really didn't see any neighbor around, so I was gonna come, other than... Other than, because he owns.
We didn't have anybody.
He owns two houses across the street, right, so.
He owns two parcels around there, yeah.
And he's got a, you know, a family member's not happy about this.
Maybe he'll change his sweaters for us.
His own dog doesn't like it or something, I don't know. Yeah, I think so.
So all good, all good for a public hearing today?
Yes. Perfect.
All right, and now, our most favorite one of all, is to set a site visit date for California quarry.
So I was thinking a Saturday, because we want as many people as we can, and we probably want someone with a car to kind of drive up and then drive back, just so we can do it safely. Um, so all hands on deck, I think would be a good thing, and this is our initial one, so we may be going back. I think this is conversation, this is you guys to put your heads together.
That's that one at the very, very top of everything.
I've been up there, James has been up there, Judy's been up there, um, so I just need to know who commits, and I'm thinking a Saturday, whatever time you guys tell me, and I was either thinking this Saturday or the next Saturday, just to make it convenient for everybody.
Or is this in relation to the houses that are up there?
California quarry, it's the top.
The very top that borders the state land.
This is nuts.
All the way at the top. We are doing a bloom test.
Which, by the way, our guy that does the bloom test, he retired, he did all that stuff.
Right.
So please get in touch with Mettenbach and Eggers, they, they will come up with somebody.
Funny story.
Then, our guy just retired.
One of their employees told me to hand him the button, he's said, I'm handling it, so great, I probably won't have any hints from them either, um.
Yeah, our guy used to, he'd do the bloom test, send us the pictures from all various places, he's actually had photographs.
I might have to do some research to figure out.
I have a question.
They are working on the drone photos, um.
Are they right at the edge of the scenic overlay?
Who?
Are they much higher? Malali?
They're way higher.
Way.
Malali.
Well, that's what I thought too. I think, I think I'm running into trouble with the limits of this computer.
We're talking about California quarry now.
I know. That, that's Malali or isn't Malali?
The one you're talking about is Malali.
Kion and Scott.
Oh.
Yeah, Malali was the.
Malali is at the bottom of the scenic overlay.
Spencer and Scott.
Spencer and Scott, you were out last summer, what's the?
Okay, then I know what we're talking about, yes. And it's the one we're going, oh my god.
Yeah, we barely survived.
All right, so what do you guys think for timing? What works best? I just kind of wanna set up a day, we can figure out timing after.
I can't do the next two weekends by getting the following.
Okay, so I, I was just, I know December thirty is in between years too, I was just throwing out there. Do, do we want to try through January sixth?
Or seven, six or seven, or.
So Sunday?
I can do it. Yeah, I can.
Seven would be better for me.
I can do January sixth or seventh.
But, but I don't, what? I know, I know for sure I could do the seven.
Sunday, January seventh?
Sounds good.
John, you wanna come?
Can I put that?
Totally, top California quarry, where I live, you know.
There's so much stuff in here.
All the way to the top.
I don't live at the top. I would never live at the top.
Do you wanna come to the, well, you can let me know.
I have a super outback, it's helpful.
That I would count on you.
Yeah.
Um, so we just wanna get as many people up there.
Stop at my house for oxygen, I know.
Sorry. When are you talking afternoon?
Sunday, January seventh.
Probably fine.
What time do you guys prefer? Morning, afternoon?
Late morning is all right, afternoon's all right, Sundays are usually, I better look, but Sundays are usually fine.
I'd say.
This is the last top, tippy top.
I don't have a thing on Sunday at seven.
Not before.
What time?
Not before eleven.
Afternoon?
Um, yeah, I need to.
Early afternoon, so we don't run into.
Yeah, so early afternoon, yeah.
You need to get a bit special, like.
What'd you say, one o'clock?
One?
I know.
I'll send an email around too, but that way at least we're all on, we can mark it off.
Yeah.
California quarry, six, one AM, one PM.
Just Sunday, January seventh.
Got it. On my calendar.
Perfect.
Got it.
Uh, just to make a, a point, I'll just jump back to the.
Meeting.
The Molly case for a minute. He came to us and said he's just in the scenic overlay, and I'm sure he got that off of the map.
Yeah, probably.
Well, we surveyed the properties, two properties down from that, the very bottom of, of that road. Very bottom of that road, the RCK, is at twelve hundred feet. So that's how far off.
Different.
An actual survey is to the tells you from what these maps are showing. Good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm showing that the line goes right through the property.
No, that's what I'm telling you. It's four hundred, you're four hundred feet off.
Hence my, what I, what I looked at and what we had met and talked about, it was half and half, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and you know, when I look at the twenty-foot contour lines, which we get from the beds, I think.
Four hundred feet?
If you look at the bottom of, of, uh, that road, which is, um, not finally, you know.
Hickory.
Have Hickory. If you look at the bottom of the Hickory Road, the very bottom, that turnaround cul-de-sac is at twelve hundred feet.
Oh, that part is, that's twelve hundred?
That's twelve hundred feet, so your, your place is up the road another three, four hundred feet.
This thing must be in meters or something. It says fifty-five, seventy-two.
Yeah, just to, just to show you, you know, there'll be cases in the scenic overlay where we're gonna ask to get a survey.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Much as I love this thing, I recognize that it's put together with spit and berm wire.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so, any other questions?
January fourth, next meeting.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn unless, oh, lady here, do you have something for us, or?
Well, it didn't, I just, I have more ready, like, how do things work and getting permits and such, I could just ask somebody.
She talking.
So?
Okay.
There's symptoms during the day, but it's gonna work out.
You can ask.
Did you wanna see it, did you wanna see a meeting, or did you wanna talk to Melissa?
I'll talk to Melissa.
Oh, okay. I do have a, I do have a question before we go.
Are we adjourned in the meeting?
Well, no, this is.
In the meeting?
I guess this is formal.
Pause.
I have reached the point where my equipment and the software are running into each other. I need more memory and I can't put it on this machine.
You asking me for money?
Yeah.
I hate to tell you, but I have to finagle the budget next year to even get ArcGIS paid for for you.
Well.
So you need to go to bill. I, I.
All right, I'll go directly to.
The budget was cut again, um, so there were things that were.
Is there anything left to cut?
No. And I sent an email and said, this isn't even gonna cover plan, this isn't even gonna cover, uh, New York Planning Federation and ArcGIS, and the two things that I have left, that's it.
I mean, the license is only a hundred bucks.
Okay.
The license is only a hundred bucks, because I'm a volunteer.
It is not governing.
So I'm just telling you.
I will.
I don't know where to put money from out of our planning board budget.
And I'm willing to have the town own it and leave all the rest of my stuff on my machine and I'll just put that on it, but I will talk to him though. Because, you know, I've been paying machines out of my pocket. And they, I can't get to the release. I can't run it. They want thirty-two gigs and I've got sixteen.
No, and I totally understand that, just in the budget and in the twenty-twenty-four budget, I was looking like, how am I gonna even finagle this? And I will, I'll figure it out, but.
Yeah.
It's expandable.
You have to.
I talked to a Novo.
Well, Julie, I'll try, I'll try to bill too, because what you, what you're presenting is the most important. Piece that we got. I mean, we never had that before. We would just go get a flat piece of paper.
Well, that's why you asked for the screen all those years ago.
His whole point is general fund, so maybe, but he has to okay that, like, you know, I can't go in and say, this is what's available, so that's why, I mean, I'll even.
I can find that, I can find out what I can get, you know, a Lenovo or an Acer or something that's got enough memory that is, got the.
You know, it might be a good idea, research and research and figure out what kind of nominal map we're looking at, so when we go in, we have all the information.
My guess is it's gonna be under two grand.
I want him to do it out of the general fund, because it's the option I have.
Judy, when you say memory, what are you referring to? Your operating memory?
Yes, yes. Ram.
It ran.
I've got plenty of disk space, because I got a new.
Genetic.
I understand. Okay, so.
It cannot add into this.
We only have sixteen.
I only have sixteen. This is like, this is like a three-year-old machine.
Okay.
And it's starting to hiccup. I was having trouble today. It's starting to hiccup with the old release. And they got a new release, which they say solves some problems, but I can't run it.
Well, well.
Takes thirty-two, you don't just run it?
Yeah, no, it's big.
It's a hog. It really is.
But in that case, then you don't want to just get that, you wanna get in the hive.
No, I wanna get something I can add memory to.
Or something, yeah.
I wanna get something I can add memory to, and, and probably not thirty-two, because that's the minimum.
No, that's why I said like one thirty-two, like you wanna go even bigger, sixty-four.
I don't, I don't know what they are. Sixty-four certainly would make sense.
One thirty-two is the next.
No, one twenty-eight is the next.
Okay.
They're all.
Sixty-four, one twenty-eight, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just binary. It's only ones and zeros.
That's right, ones and zeros.
All right, we'll, we'll look into it.
For now.
But it makes sense, and.
Yeah, and I'll want, all, all of my personal stuff can stay on this machine. I can take it and put it on when I'm doing this.
What you do for us is amazing, and there shouldn't be a question.
It's very valuable and it has to be addressed.
So there's not a valid laptop in planning boards. We can use that as defense, defense too, because that was obsolete years ago, so if we wanna consider.
Well, the other possibility is for them to buy me a new one, and I clear everything off of here and give it to the town.